I thank you for being so becoming a president that you're another one. Thank you for all the best and the help that's been given to people in real life. If you need tomorrow's father is looking at this for the president here. He's willing to not understand that these things are very difficult. I pray for our country, our state, our parish, our community as we can have this. I pray for president, governor, our elected office for the business as it were. Realize that we are the people looking at the pain department. I pray for words and articles for this forty. I pray for the sick father, pray for our own forces, please, because I'm waiting. Good father, I just pray there was not some of these boys. Realize that we need to do this, and thank you for these courage and honesty across. Realize we want to prove, certainly that was the problem. I think this is going to be enough to go on a prayer. Thank you, Mr. Dexter Onstad.
Mr. Dexter Onstad.
Here.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Here.
Mr. Michael Cheetham.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Kliniken.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwood.
Here.
President Lewis Kim.
Here. Well, okay, it's. Okay, would you approve again?
Oh, man.
You know, I'm looking at you. That's about how it appears. There is a question. Question from the audience. In our site, in a call, working. All good. A doctor made it from January twenty second, twenty four, twenty two.
I'll be over in minutes. Mr. President, I will be there.
You know, I'm looking at you. They're going to be in charge. There is a question. Question from the audience. In our page, in a call, working. All good. A doctor made it from January twenty second, twenty four, twenty two.
I'll be over in minutes. Mr. President, I will be there.
You know, I'm looking at you. They're going to be in charge. There is a question. Question from the audience.
I would like to say something. I think we had some miscommunication about one item that was on here. And that was the video poker. I think somehow or another, it's gotten out that we passed or we were approving video poker. But I think what the minutes say is, if I'm correct, it makes it that the video poker, that the storm has given permission to go out into the community to talk to the people about video poker?
It says, "A motion was made by Mr. Jason McCray, second by Mrs. Kristen Chastain, to approve requests from East Feliciano Drug and Alcohol Awareness Council to present video poker to residents of East Feliciano Parish." So, this is not approved video poker. A resolution has to be approved by the police jury first.
I just wanted to clarify that because there is some misinformation.
I was actually confused myself, but I misunderstood.
First of all, jury can approve video poker. Okay, okay. A doctor made it from January twenty second, twenty four, twenty two. Okay, all right. In a call, working. How's your case? That's okay. Yeah, that's okay. You got it. A doctor made it from January twenty second, twenty four, twenty two. Need to know the problem.
That's a problem. How about your motion?
I'm not going to. I'm not going to. There is a question. Question from the audience. In our page, in a call, working. Do give the question for sister who fell cat breed on the feral cat, ten to twelve.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to make a testimony. To speak, thank you, Mr. Clinton, I appreciate it. My name is Jan Leonard. I'm a resident of, I've not been here about twenty years. And I'd like to speak today about the feral stray community pet ordinance that was recently put up. And I'd like to present some more information. My purpose. I'd like to call attention to the, that we have a feral pet population explosion. Provide information to the jury. I've got some information here for everyone. I'm going to go through it very, very quickly. And I'm going to make the presentation available to anyone that wants it. You can go back and get some more information on it. Here, I've got some stats on the pet industry. What I'm trying to show is that it's a billion dollar market, which is supported by people who love animals. Okay, a few definitions. A feral cat is a wild cat. It's one that's not trained, can't be homed or anything. And that's, that's the kind of cat that I'm referring to here. Cats have been here since the sixteen hundreds. They were used mostly for pest control with agriculture and so forth. Cats were actually in the Navy, used for the same purpose. And if you look at the photograph on the very left there, that cat was actually adopted. The marine bought it back to Chicago and kept it as a pet. So, cats have a very long history of starting in the military, if you believe that. What I want to touch on on this slide is that a female cat goes into heat every four weeks. The population can explode very quickly. And they can have anywhere from four to six cats or kittens per litter several times a year. They breed almost here around here because of our climate. I'd like you to pay attention to this cat pyramid that will come up later. This shows a visual of what happens when a cat starts breeding. The first year, you've got twelve new cats and so on and so on and so on. This is just one cat. Okay, here is real life. This is real life. And again, pay attention to that pyramid. The top graph there is one other cat that showed up at a house. The one on the bottom is one other cat that showed up at another house. As you can see, I spayed and neutered those cats and I stopped the pyramid. So, we just have some cats that were adopted. I was a little slow on the tape there. That's when I first learned TNR. And they told me, wait till the mother stops nursing while I bird dogged that cat. And that wasn't true. And that's why it took me so long before I finally got her in. As long as the kittens are on food, you can take them out and get her spayed. This also is real life. We took ten cats from East Feliciano to a spay day. Nine of those cats were females. One was pregnant, one was in heat. This is in January. And if you look to the right, if the cat, all of those cats would have multiplied. If a litter of four, we would have thirty-six more cats. A litter of six would have been fifty-four. The litter of two point eight is that pyramid. They estimate that two point eight kittens survive. I disagree with that. Most of them do survive. And so, you've got a full litter of six kittens that are going to reproduce. Okay, I'd like to call my attention to Cock Bill's coffee. I was going to call to trap a cat at his location. And I'd also like to make the jury, or using the microphones and so forth. Fields can do everything that we can do. He just does it in a different way. He can't come to the meeting tonight because his, his business is open and closes at six o'clock. But anyway, there's cats there in Jackson. And I'll cover this later, but I've got three cost vouchers to go up there and catch those cats. I did trap one. We've had neutered and adopted. What is TNR? TNR is trap neuter return. Basically, what we do is we go into a feral colony, which will include ferals and stray cats, commuting cats. We bait traps. We trap them, take them to the vet. They get vaccinated, spayed, neutered, and they're ear tipped. So, that's how we can tell whether a cat's been neutered or not by that ear tip. And there are thousands of TNR organizations and volunteers around the country. Here's the main problem right here. People feed these cats and they don't get them fixed. And that's how you end up with forty, fifty, sixty, seventy. And it'll just keep going if you don't stop it. Somebody needs to have that cat. And again, this is volunteer driven. It's people like me. We buy our own traps mostly. We can borrow them. We go out into the community, provide as a community service. We don't charge anybody for what we do. And we rely on nonprofits, donations and so forth to pay for that. One of the challenges for us is with the lack of resources. We don't have a shelter, rescue resources. Penney House is typically full. We can't bring animals in there. And lack of manpower and budgets. I filed a nuisance, just trying to get something moving on this. If you remember the slide with the forty cats, that's what that was about. And I wanted that to stop. We need to stop and get all those animals stopped from breeding. That was June of twenty twenty-three. So, there's nothing been done yet. And we were pushing it with trying to get that in. So, that's what I'm trying to accomplish. The sheriff doesn't have the personnel. From what I hear, there's one gentleman here that has a real job with the jury. He can't go out all the time either. So, that's part of our problem. Okay, this is where we took the ten cats from East Feliciano. And this is some of the things that I'd like to start getting going for us. It was paid for by the grant, spay neuter grant. We took the cats to Walker, which was very unusual. Usually, out of parish, you can't go. And so, there's a residency requirement. So, these guys opened everything up to them. On that day, it was a hundred and twenty-three dogs and two hundred and forty-five cats. This is something else that I'd like to see us get down to now. Oops. If you look at the bottom, those two organizations are volunteer nonprofits. So, they're the ones that's putting this on. It's for Tandy Livingston, Sunny Helena. It was February one, but it was for Logan Come People to Help Them Spay and Neuter Their Pets. And it's all volunteer grants and donations. This is just to give you an idea. This is not, you know, some blog I'm not doing. These are all nonprofits here. Some of the ones across the top are state or city. So, you could get, as an example for us, that money would have to come from the jury. I'm not asking, asking for that, excuse me. The other ones are nonprofits and they're volunteer run. We do have resources available to us. And that's one of the things that I'd like to accomplish, is to let everyone in the parish know that we do have some place to take these cats. Now, we're going to eventually branch out with the shelter, but I'm concentrating on cats right now. So, these are the resources that we can use that do accept out of parish. Most love dogs also. Picks up animals here. And I was going to use it as fun as, you know, I've highlighted. We can do TV spots. We can get sponsorship and we can get money from a lot of organizations that support animal rescue. Okay, this is a podcast format for my love dogs. You can go ahead and watch that. This is my proposal to the police jury. I respectfully request that the cat organs be tabled again. And the reason is, I would like to form a committee just loosely. I don't want to get bogged down in bureaucracy, of at least one volunteer from each district. Or if you, if you guys want to designate someone, that's fine too. And I would like to include Mary Reese, who's going to be the executive director of our shelter. What we plan to do with that is give you recommendations to try and implement a TNR and spay neuter in our parish. Because that's half of the problem is we've got reproducing animals, dogs, cats, everything. The committee is not meant to compete with a shelter but partner with. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Part of, some of the things that I plan to do is put out a website or a Facebook page or something. A lot of the people that I work with to spay and neuter their cats have no idea that there is something out there. It's not much, but there is a resource. So, I'd like to get that out to everyone. I myself am going to increase the number of cats that I give by appointment. I use ABS and I'm going to try and get eight to sixteen cats a week. I would like to thank Ms. Nikki. She suggested I join the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm working on that. Another thing is create a Facebook informational group for residents to go and say, I have a bunch of cats, you know, or where can I go to get help? And we'll have volunteers do that with them.
Do you have a free group page?
Did I make it?
Well, you made it.
That's it. The only other thing I do is I've got two pages on here to donate. Anyone that would like to copy or the presentation, there's some cards up here. I've got my email phone number. You can contact me and I'll be glad to give you some more information.
What was it? I didn't mean to cut you off. But what was it? Did you say what would happen to the cats after they're moved?
Now, one thing I do want to point out is all of these organizations are rescues. We try to save animals. When we can get them adopted out and rescued, we do. If not, now, the TNR program for cats is specifically trap neuter return. So, we trap the cat and we bring it back where we got it. Mary's plan is to provide shelters and to feed those cats. They are no longer breeding cats. Most of the people that I deal with are, they like the cats. It's just, you know, you don't want forty of them or fifty of them.
Well, it sounds like to me, you might be reducing the numbers, but you're not reducing the headache of them. Getting on people's cars, using the bathroom in their flower beds. And I think that's the problem. We have to control the dogs. And I think cats should be done the same way, in my opinion. And speak for everybody else. Because I know people that has, I mean, expensive vehicles get scratched up. They can't get in their yards in their flower beds because the snakes are there. For the cats using the bathroom in flower beds.
One, yeah, one of the problems with that is breeding animals. And that's going to be the males. They're very aggressive. They fight. They have huge territories and they basically eat, eat, fight and breed. They spray the nastiest smell you want ever wanted to see. What I usually do for someone that has, as a matter of fact, I have, and I don't know who has Ethel. I have two people in Ethel that are having complaints, just as you just found. And I'm trapping over and over Ethel right now. I have thirty cats and I'm, I'm working on them. So, I've finally found out who those people are. I'm going to talk to them and see what we can do. But now, you're on me, yeah.
What he's asking, these are wild, they're not domesticated cats. You're trying to get a spay and turn that into a wild?
Yes, sir. Well, ideally, in my humble opinion, I don't think a cat, a feral cat, which is a wild cat, which is their natural state, I don't think they colonize. That's just a theory of mine. Because if you don't feed them, they behave like any other wild animal, a raccoon, a possum and so forth. You have the natural pressure on that population. But when somebody feeds, you start bringing in cats. You'll have friendly, semi-friendly sparrows, semi-feral, and they all start breeding because they're not fixed and it multiplies. So, what I'm concerned, my, my goal is to save the ferals because they can't go to homes.
People would take the whole consideration and go to do that. They would come in and work with you for a day.
I'm, I'm with you on the same page. What you're talking about, same thing with the cat. There's a whole lot of coming in, coming out, coming in, doing things.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm so sorry. Could you use your microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I was saying, I was, let me turn it on. I was just talking about the same thing with Mr. Right, Mr. Keith Mills. Yeah, we're probably on the same page. I just wanted to, you know, because I have the same problem in my house. Just sit down.
Well, we've got two issues here, the feral cats, spay and neuter, I've been reaching. We need animals to control. You get out of control, it includes everything. And when a cat gets picked up, a dog gets picked up, when a horse gets picked up, no matter who you are, you go pay your fine, just like you buy a bill for a bit. Get out of jail, break that off. And it's been, East Feliciano has been very rural, but it's the time to make a change. And it's going to take, I spoke with the sheriff, it's going to take a joint effort between him, the volunteers and the jury to put the package together and make the work.
And I think that's what our residents.
If you own the cat. So, if you own the cat.
But if you own the cat?
If you don't own the cat, he has your house.
That's what animal control comes from.
You don't do it, for one thing. And what I'm trying to do is we're going to get a group of people. When you have a child that's not.
I got some. I got plenty. I know what to do with it. I'm going to take care of it.
And I think that's what our resident from Clinton was wanting, was just for people, if they own cats and their cats presented problems, that they would be fined, just like a dog owner would be fined. And as a jury, we, as you know, we don't have the money to do all that. We've got roads that are in awful shape. So, right now, and we don't, we don't have money to address this, but we can put the responsibility on the people that own the cats and add that to our ordinance or whatever and put dog and cat. And that would be a starting place for us to, to control that. And I have cats. So, I mean, I haven't had any complaints yet, and I might be after this, but I haven't had any complaints from my neighbors yet, so. Are they fixed? Um, some are. Can you, yeah, contact me and I'll come fix them, hopefully, and get them fixed. Get them spayed and neutered in their ready shop. I appreciate that, but I will take care of fixing my cat. Thank you. Well, but if it's running loose, we need to get it fixed because it's running. It's not really loose.
Let me move over. The moment you said, so a person, a cat comes to his house and he responsible for the cat with a lot of cash, you would match him and try and help or something like that?
No, that's why, what we're, what I'm trying to get is a volunteer organization to go out and help people. I'm trapping thirty cats right now. I've got another thirty. We have, we have hundreds of cats. All of the, most of the people that I've worked with like the cats. They're animal lovers that don't want the cats destroyed. They just don't want them to stop breeding. And there's a certain point. It's, it costs two hundred dollars to spay and neuter a cat. But with these, these are feral, so we get discounts. I'm actually a cost volunteer and we give vouchers and it does cover East Feliciano and there's no charge for it. So, we'll provide the service that citizens can also do themselves. And what I would like is a volunteer group, again, from each parish to find out what, what we can do. And then, we are going to respond. We're going to help by responding. You know, all somebody has to do is call me, tell me they've got cats. I'll put them on my list. I'm one person. If I can't do the cats, they can do it themselves. Or I can give them resources. And that's what we don't have right now.
We will do it. Ask the code, the volunteer, the jury, the volunteer, the project team group.
I have a volunteer already. We've already, we're already starting. But what I'm asking from the jury is to do it district wide. Let's get each person. Another thing I'd love to offer is I'd be glad to take any juror into your district and you can go, I don't expect you to trial, but I can show you how I approach that, what I do with the trial, and that you can see and actually talk to the person. That'll help.
If you do a dog, still?
If I do a dog, I call Cindy with my love dogs. She rescues here. As a matter of fact, six hundred dogs that she's rescued, four hundred and fifty of them are from East Feliciano. And she works strictly on donations. So, I would call her.
What do you got on there? They're going to let you catch them?
A feral. That's where the shelter's going to come in. I tried to get a feral dog trapped on Branch Lane. I was out there for three weeks. I called the state. I was looking for someone to try and close it so that I could get it to there.
This one will actually bite you. You'll come up to you, he'll let you feed him. But when you get ready to try to put a collar on him, he'll chill.
Yes, I call that a feral and feral. Because he's accustomed to people's not running off. But, yeah, that's.
And we don't want to take care of them in the hallway because we got a neighbor that will call the animal rights people and you have your yard.
Same thing now, Mr. McCray. I don't do dogs, but I have friends that do when we overlap. So, if you'll let me know and send me, please send me a text or an email. And that way, I have something, a phone, a message I may not get. And I will get some resources and get back to you or the person, whatever you want me to do. I will call around, tell me what the situation is, and I'll see if I can get us some help.
I'm going to say this. I travel a lot. You know, one time, I got to come home, I had a cat or dog traveling down the street. And it wouldn't.
And that's what I'm trying to stop. We don't need to have, because those, and the shelters are overrun with animals. We have more animals than there's pets. But we are rescuing and we try to save them, so.
Because what we're talking about is you don't have the revenue to do the thing that you want to do.
Well, for, for starting off, yes, starting off, we're, we're going to be volunteer. Because I'm trapping right now. I can go out tonight, trap a cat and go have it spayed and neutered at seven o'clock in the morning. Okay, and, and it doesn't cost you guys anything. It costs me because I'm burning my gas, my time and so forth. We're going to start off small as a resource. And then, that's why I showed you some of these slots with the canes and the radio stations. Once we get the information work out, then we're going to start asking for donations. If five people donate ten dollars to cause, I can spay a cat.
Of course, you, Mr. Minzer, you're a good writer, you're a great writer. Yeah, that would be, yeah, if you would.
But we're starting off small right now. And that's what we want. We're trying to build a volunteer group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have a question?
No, sorry. I was going to see if I could speak, please.
Please do. Is there no speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to come to.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute.
I got the one.
Thank you, Mr. McCray.
Joseph Shaker. I just came tonight because I'm one of the people that is kind of pushing the cat thing here in town. You know, I'm high behind nothing. I am the guy. They called Chris Hall. They got to put it on the paper. In my situation, I had a lady moved in next door to me. In two or three months, there was so many cats when you pulled in my driveway. I mean, they ran like roaches when the lights hit. They were everywhere. So, after three or four conversations with her about the cats and asking her, please kind of do something, because it was just, it was so many cats. Me and her kind of had it out one day. I was literally shoveling a five gallon bucket of cat crap every day out of my driveway, full. I'm tracking it in my vehicles. I'm tracking it in my home. I had enough of cats, you know? I don't own cats. I didn't appreciate her cats. I've got a sixty foot flower bed in my front yard. It's a sixty foot litter box. I've got sand in my backyard when we pour concrete slabs. It's a thirty foot litter box. You can't stand nowhere in my yard that you put this well cat crap. It was bad. So, the last conversation we had, she realized I was getting serious about the cat problem. And she told me, she said, I can't pick and choose these cats because I love them all. But if you can relocate these cats somewhere, do whatever you've got to do to get to a manageable number. I caught thirty-seven cats in four days. I relocated them to Normalwood, which a friend of mine has got two big hay bards. And he told me, turn them loose at my hay barge because they'll catch rats. I took thirty-seven cats to Normalwood. After doing that, I realized I took my problem and turned it use on someone else in Normalwood. So, you, you probably got thirty-seven cats running around Normalwood right there. I'll tell you, I turned them loose in the hay barge. I can tell you they stayed there. So, I turned them loose in the hay barge. But the other alternative was I had been given advice, if they walked in my yard, crapping in my bed, to shoot them. I've got to live next door to this lady. I'm not going to shoot every cat that comes in my yard because he's in my yard. I agree one hundred percent that he's pushed out of parish, needs some type of animal shelter, something that we can pick up stray cats, stray dogs, whatever. But the situation I'm talking about, this apples and oranges. It's not stray dogs. It's not stray cats. There's an owner next door that owned forty-one cats. And I had forty-one cats crapping in my driveway and my flower bed. When I got her down to four, we agreed that I, I'd stop messing with cats. In a month and a half, she had twenty-five cats in here. So, it wasn't that her cats were breeding. Every litter of kittens that was born and she knew about, she brought them to her house. But we are rescuing, we try to save them, so.
Because what we're talking about is, you do have the revenue to do the thing that you want to do.
Well, for, for starting off, yes, starting off, we're, we're gonna be volunteer. Because I'm trapping right now, I can go out tonight, trap a cat, and go have it spayed and neutered at seven o'clock in the morning. Okay, and, and it doesn't cost you guys anything, it costs me, because I'm burning my gas, my time, and so forth. We're gonna start off small as a resource, and then that's why I showed you some of these slots with the canes and the radio stations. Once we get the information work out, then we're gonna start asking for donations. If five people donate ten dollars to cause, I can spend that.
Of course, you would, you would be a good way to, to pay for it. Yeah, that would be, yeah, if you would want.
But we're starting off small right now, and that's what we want, we're trying to build a volunteer group, thank you very much.
You would, thank you. If you have a question?
No, sorry, I was gonna see if I could speak, please.
Please do. Is there no speaking?
Oh, you did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was, I was gonna come to.
Oh, okay, wait a minute, just.
I got the one.
Thank you, man.
Joseph Shaver. Um, I just came tonight because I'm one of the people that is kind of pushing the cat thing here in town. You know, I'm high behind nothing, I am the guy, they called Chris Hall, they got to put it on the paper. In my situation, I had a lady moved in next door to me, um, in two or three months, there was so many cats when you pulled in my driveway. I mean, they ran like roaches when the lights hit, they were everywhere. So, after three or four conversations with her about the cats, and asking her, please, kind of do something, because it was just, it was so many cats. Um, me and her kind of had it out one day, I was literally shoveling a five gallon bucket of cat crap every day out of my driveway. Full of it. I'm tracking it in my vehicles, I'm tracking it in my home, I had enough cats, you know. I don't own cats, I didn't appreciate her cats. I got a sixty foot flower bed in my front yard, it's a sixty foot litter box. I've got sand in my backyard when we pour concrete slabs, it's a thirty foot litter box. You can't stand nowhere in my yard that you put the smell of cat crap, it was bad. So, the last conversation we had, she realized I was getting serious about the cat problem. And she told me, she said, I can't pick and choose these cats, but I love them all. But if you can relocate these cats somewhere, do whatever you gotta do to get to a manageable number. I caught thirty-seven cats in four days. I relocated them to Normalwood, a friend of mine has got two big hay bards, and he told me, turn loose at my hay barn, because they'll catch rats. I took thirty-seven cats to Normalwood. After doing that, I realized I took my problem and turned it use on someone else in Normal. So, after you, you probably got thirty-seven cats running at Normalwood, right there. I love, I'll tell you, I turned loose in the hay barn, I can tell you it stayed there, so I turned loose in the hay barn. But the other alternative was, I had been given advice, if they walked in my yard, crapping in my bed, to shoot them. I gotta live next door to this lady. I'm not gonna shoot every cat that comes in my yard, because he's in my yard. I agree one hundred percent that he's pushed out of parish, needs some type of animal shelter, something that we can pick up stray cats, stray dogs, whatever. But the situation I'm talking about, this apples and oranges, it's not stray dogs, it's not stray cats. There's an owner next door that owned forty-one cats, and I had forty-one cats crapping in my driveway and my flower bed. When I got her down to four, we agreed that I, I'd stop messing with cats. In a month and a half, she had twenty-five cats again. So, it wasn't that her cats were breeding, every litter of kittens that was born and she knew about, she brought them to her house. So I trapped cats again. Now she was threatening legal action, because I was trapping the second time. Again, she gave me permission to trap the cats. I thought I was, I was trying to do the right thing without killing the cats. Because honestly, the way my yard smelled, and when I tracked that cat crap in my truck in my house, I wanted to kill every cat in Clinton. But I didn't do that, I'm trying to do it the right way. So I went to the DA's office, I went to the sheriff's office, I go into Clinton Police Department, I filed complaints, and they told me the police jury could amend the law by adding some words to an existing law. And, and I think that's a starting point. At least now, if I can call the sheriff's department or the police department with this issue, they have a foot to stand on. They can go up there and cite a citation. Whether we find them in court, or whether we call it a warning, I don't care. Because I was told that if they came to court, they could stop it before it got to the judge. Because my neighbor is a single parent, raising a child, I don't wanna find someone as a single parent. But once they get that first offense under their bill, and we waive that fine, the second offense, you gotta reach in your pocket and pay for it. And I believe that's as fair as I can possibly be. If we waive the first fine as a warning, but you're written down that you have a first warning, your second offense, you're gonna pay for it. And I believe that that would stop a lot of the issues of people. When a person gets ten or twelve cats and none of them's fixed, in two months is thirty cats, in, in three months is seventy, eighty cats. And I believe it gets to a point they can't do nothing with, they can't afford to fix that many cats, and they don't have the heart to go out there and shoot half of them. You know, so I, I get it, it gets out of hand before, it's like rabbits, like that, they're done, you know, you're, you're outnumbered. And, uh, I believe we both have a valid point. They need to, to continue maybe with an animal shelter of some type, but we need something to where we can pick up, call, out of this department, and a citation be written. Do it legally, without shooting at somebody's cats, because I gotta live next door to that lady.
And right now, we have an ordinance that dogs do not care.
That's right.
We just wait, feline to our order, she wants to take that, if you want something. If somebody has a feline to our dog order, we take it, it's a creditation.
Uh, uh, we also have a, out of spay neuter, because that's part of the problem, I had the same problem, I ordered the pups next door. And I did everything, I'm, I'm not breeding cats.
But we tell you, we tend to the last week.
And feed it, you know, part of the problem is you feed it enough, if you're gonna feed it, you gotta fix it.
It's not gonna fix its problem.
No.
We used, we, I have a man, a man that's a feline to our, we tend it to the last week, so we can either feed it.
I would like to go ahead and add it to the ordinance.
A second question.
Can I just say one, please, because, uh, Ms. Harris pulled the ordinances up, you have several ordinances for dogs. Basically, your ordinance is state, dog has to be vaccinated, has to never be shot, and things like that. And we don't have a parish ordinance that says, you know, dogs at large, cats at large. They have a state law that says dogs at large, and I can send you the link to that, that's a state law, the owner of the dog is responsible for the dog. In this situation, we don't really have owners of a lot of these cats. So if you don't have the owner of the cat, you can't really charge anybody for owning it.
But in my situation, there is owner of the cats.
Oh, there is?
Yes, she owns the cats, and I mean, they're crawling on our vehicles, they're getting all over my outdoor kitchen stuff.
She gonna own them until this time, for the fair fine.
That's the thing, when you go there.
My neighbor's doing that, he doesn't own the dog, but the dog too, that is, that is outdated. He walks around living every day, he's been there for several months now. But he found out he had done damage in my house, he said, he's not my dog, I don't feed him the name, he just lives here. So, I'm still stuck in the problem.
That's right.
So we're gonna, we're gonna follow.
So what we're gonna do is, we have the ordinance, this way, we support the ordinance up, we have the ordinance, we put it in the ordinance. This way, the fish has yours and cattle, we can add. If you want to, uh, if it's on, you can, I, I, if you want to introduce it, if you want to introduce it, the ordinance, you can advertise it and come back, that would make me.
We have that ordinance, and we had a, um.
It has a hearing on it.
No, we take it.
Well, we already had the public hearing on it, and then we technically put it down.
The table of the vote.
So with the public hearing, they all had, there was a proposed amendment, well, everything is said, everywhere there was dogs, it said, had.
And cats.
But I believe what Jeff is showing him is what you all saw proposed, it wouldn't be the same thing, you would just put dogs up there where it says animal, wow.
Dogs and cats, yeah, we have dogs and cats in this, because like I said, you don't really have a parish ordinance about dogs and cats running at large, you have a state law saying that. And what you wanna do is, we're just gonna take these ordinance, you move on. And the other ordinance that y'all, uh, addressed earlier had to do with vaccination.
Right.
But it's all that you have to deal with dogs, vaccination, you know, that's, that's, so we need to.
You need to, take, you need to, um. I mean, the ones that this attorney is talking about. Can you give us the number, do you have the number on that ordinance?
It's a three dash two, and then three dash two, you don't, is that, that's correct.
Yep.
And it's our ordinance.
Yeah. And I'll just make a declaration on this, I'll give it to Ms. Harris.
So we have to have another application, that would be a different order. Is the animal, what's the animal?
Uh, certain animals at large prohibited. And basically, it says that you have the law permitting the owner of any horses, mules, cattle, jacks, uh, any sheep, dogs and cats, uh, to run, run, uh, run or roam at large on any public highway, highways, common lands, either public or private, other than dogs. So we just may add dogs and cats in there, it should be safe.
Instead of co-chair, I mean, I want to, I want to.
The orange?
You want to?
Ask everything.
Okay. Your other favor?
Ah.
Thank you. Approve twenty twenty-four, deliver permit for Dallas to the store, on our, through the, through the.
Sir.
Could have it, two way, take it, and your other favor?
Ah.
Your call, would be good. Approve advertising for fear, upcoming agency on playing the dog. I think that's the, any big, terms of.
I made a motion that we advertise to deal with the legacy.
But I don't put it in the script, put it in the order, you know, sir.
Ah.
Your song, would be good. Could be a careful, they'll come in, I have one clear for change. When I appointed the mayor, I appointed chair, she said, I will be chairman of the committee, and myself and Mr. Sarah will be co-chair of finance. I combined them all, but I wasn't chair, I didn't come in, we'll be a co-chair. That's it, Kishna, we're your one, and I'll be chair, and they, they come in, we'll be the chair.
He's the finance chair?
You gotta be coaching.
No, he's co-chair, he's the other chair of the fund.
Okay, could that be that quicker way?
Uh, I would have one item, we do have a committee meeting tomorrow, in, and it's at, I'm off, to discuss the parish manager of justice. That we currently have.
Final committee.
Don't do it?
Agree with you.
Okay.
I'd like to give a motion to approve monthly invoices.
Okay.
Oh, sir.
Thank you.
Quite your, you know, thank you.
Ah.
Public board, you call them, they're dead to my credit.
Uh, I don't have anything, Mr. President, I want to let the public know that the trash, uh, trash truck is back in service again.
On the lot.
Trash truck, yeah.
Who we had on the schedule?
Uh-huh. I know, I heard that.
You need traction on here?
No, I just had it up there.
But here, but here it is. Here? Oh. Oh.
Gary Hill, uh, Mr. Keith, uh, trash truck will be in Jackson. Uh, tomorrow is parish manager, we'll be helping run it. Sorry for the inconvenience, we'll try to get, accommodate you soon as possible.
What about the staff, the old folks?
I got, I had the mechanic come out, uh, he did, he did some tests on it. His diagnosis, they did not work, so I emailed Mr. University from Cuddin, because they need the last word, and I'm waiting to get back from her tomorrow, while I send the mechanic out about the, uh, the truck.
And quick, Mr. Hill?
Hey, sir, yes, sir, I know we're gonna do something to other, but we still got some people that everywhere that's ran here trying to get some rocks on their plates. Everybody who's going to remember, wait, wait, I know you got, I know you got hot stuff to do if you got a long time, but please, sir, let's not.
It depends on what you, what, what we. On the road?
No, no, sir, it's like.
On the road, right, road.
I can't even explain it, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, you hear that?
Why I got any rules on this?
I'm sorry, I have a thing.
Just taking a minute, one of my trucks is at the shop.
Good, I'm glad you know what I mean, I'm really bad.
I just want the car.
I can't remember that part, I'm going to, couldn't talk to you. Yeah, I just got.
The hecking, that's horrible, that's horrible. First of all, it's clarified, you guys could run, you people, but, you run on the road.
You missed that next one, too.
I missed it, I had to say something, man.
The mechanic coming out, first is put the record to it, bring it to the shop. You know.
It's more expensive for the record park. Than the mechanic coming out.
They're doing what's costing them, that's it.
How about that, uh, you know, Mr. Win, put a flyer in our folder, last night we dealt about a brand new truck. Are we gonna go ahead and, and maybe send that truck, find an answer?
No, we're trying to see what we're gonna do with this from first, and we're gonna move from there.
We got the brand new truck.
Oh. How long is something?
But the mechanic from Cuddin said there's nothing wrong with the truck, but mine work. The problem was, we just had it set up for almost ten years.
Ten years?
Yeah, because when y'all set it up, y'all was talking about selling it.
You did it ten years, but I didn't have that.
Because, uh, they were talking about the engine was bad, but the mechanic from Cuddin said there's nothing wrong with the engine. It doesn't make any work.
That we brought the engine, we started over and up.
Right.
And you took about three, four years left?
Problem.
Now, it?
It's about six.
It's about six.
You want your towel, Mr. Hill, and then we'll move on.
Thank you.
Jim Scott, you ever take this down?
I don't ever.
And we think just reminder that, um, Wednesday is the newly elected jurors', um, train. That's my unit, unless you have questions?
Any questions? Okay, president, what you have to do? I'm gonna be a father, the president is a father, it's a point of attention, that's what I mean. How do you, to your party, it brings the only position in his office that can hold due secretary of the treasurer and secretary, and secretary treasurer. That's, now, what I understand is with no other position in his office, it gives due office holding position, only the treasurer, now, what I understand, it can be in the past, in the past, treasurer, then president, secretary of the treasurer. The resident, this chair is holding a position as interim president, he, he can go as treasurer, I say with a point. Once we get our past manager in here, we get everything, but right now, everything is look, because we don't have a past manager. The past manager will not be our past manager president. Past manager only, we are secretary of the president, our understanding, we can't have a secretary of the president. Because I've been having a past once. When the roots of the came on, the changes, past manager, president. Is that enough? He is being on till nineteen twenty-three.
Okay, but I'm. I'm gonna show her what you just said was, she's now the interim treasurer and parish manager?
No, she's not, she's not.
She's secretary. He said treasurer by mistake, and then secretary.
Combine that with you, if you do it, if you have a president, you have a point.
Okay.
They'll do.
Uh, Mr. Few of the, I have the date, um, that.
Really important, tell you now. We have one conviction to do with that. Instead of sue that label, Mr. Chair, make sure. First year for how to now, it's a lot, who makes it, the candidate all make the mistake, or do we make the mistake?
He had to make a mistake on the application.
What's on the application? He made the mistake.
Which one is that?
Number one, that's it.
So we're gonna take it out?
We'll change it, we'll do it.
We're gonna take B two? G?
Why do we take one number?
Because they had this.
They made a mistake on the application.
On the application.
So, how was it, um, how was it advertised?
It was advertised incorrectly, and I made the changes through the publication with the paper, and I put the correct address.
And advertised correctly.
So everything is right now, it just.
Because that's the common address.
His home address, his application was correct, he had the drawings and everything for that ten acres out on sixty-three. I don't know what happened in Michigan, but not what it is.
But what he's doing is not a, you know.
No, it's, that's the statement there, huh? Now, we, that's his home address, he resumed, he asked for resumé from ten acres out on sixty-three from Agco.
No, I'm not fifteen, thirteen, no, I'm not fifteen.
Well, even though the signs were put in correct places, we still have to take them? Now, this is not for you to go on, this, this is, um.
You said a problem.
Yeah, the public hearing is already, the, the public hearing is, yeah, is already, this is just information.
So we just have backup anytime.
And we just wanna let you know that the address, as you see it, is wrong, but it has been, it was advertised incorrectly.
Who said, who said, who here, saying it's always there, but who, who?
We advertised, but we go by what's on the application. So in, he put that wrong address, but we spoke with him, not everything corrected. He went to plan, and he's on it correct?
Yeah.
So.
So the notice is.
Sorry.
The same program is already, they say, the resident approved B two. Got the motion, motion?
Sorry. And, and just so, before you say that, and the reason this is here, and it's blank, you know, you only usually get the items that you're on, but just so, just a reason, just so you'll kind of know what's going on.
Okay. You let keep it, he's on it, he's on it, he's approved. Make it approved, go call them.
Mr. Dexter Armstead? Is this Kristen Chesky?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Chino?
Yes.
Mr. Carl Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Trissey O'Leary?
Yes.
The chamber will be on Thursday at the green door, um, the ribbon cutting that we had on Friday for dark insurance, it was really ni-, um, really nice. Thank you all for your support. We also have a ribbon cutting coming up in March at the library in St. Louis. On which day, March?
Twenty-third, is that Saturday?
Yeah.
Twenty-third.
Ten to twelve.
Two to twelve. And I would really like to see, um, you jurors come to the library and, for something that you all helped to put in place. And, um, if you would come out and support the library with their ribbon cut.
You come, you come, you live in this.
Um, I just wanted to just add some anecdotal information, um, to what Miss Jane was discussing and talking about earlier. Um, we do have the problem of the overpopulation of the cats, and I know a lot of the times, people, when they're dealing with situations and things like that, frustration does tend to come to the forefront. And it makes people less likely to be amenable, to being proactive, to addressing and handling issues and concerns, and I just wanted to say that, um, the best way to go about this moving forward would be, of course, to educate. By communicating, and then afterwards advocating. Okay, so just, I know a lot of people are like, well, I have an issue right now, and I think someone made a point of saying, okay, well, we can address it by trapping, maneuvering, and releasing, but how does that deal with the fact that they're a nuisance now? Um, I did wanna point out that you all know that actually, for cats, especially those that are domesticated and pets, if they are allowed to go out and about, um, to roam, their life expectancy drops dramatically, so around about three years. And that's for cats that are quote-unquote domesticated or pets. For cats that are actually like zero, as in they spend all their time not really, um, interacting with people, their life expectancy is even lower than that because they do have natural predators. Especially in our, um, parish where you have coyotes and things of that nature, so they do have natural predators that help mitigate or maintain the population. And then for those of you that are having a more pressing matter, but the cats bothering you on, you know, your property and things like that, there is a rather innocence of way to try to deter them coming onto your property. Cats actually do not like citrusy or any other scent of that nature, so if you were to take lemon fields and orange fields and sprinkle it in areas where on the borderlines of your property, or areas you don't want the cats to go into, or you could take lemon juice, rosemary, and white vinegar, and take that mixture and spray it around your area, and that would mitigate or reduce the cats coming. You know, I figured someone should come and try to provide a solution for now, because that did seem to be a concern, so that we'd be more amenable to trying to be proactive. Again, we go back to educate, communicate, and then advocate.
Thank you.
That's you.
That's some good stuff there.
I'm not gonna be as nice as you are. Hey, how y'all doing? Thank you, I see y'all. I know, they do, said I'm out of District Six, Glove Creek. And, uh, what?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, I'm going quick. Legs up, sir. I'm a little bit here. I'm here about, some things, are you, Alisha?
Hi.
Hello, they do, it's nice to meet you. I, I wanna make sure that there's not a roadblock between my area, the dirt, what do you call it, dirt road block area of Glove Creek. It's not a gravel road, there's no gravel, there's no gravel on any roads, there's, there hasn't been any by great old Liberty Road north in over eight months now, since the last of the drought. We had a guy coming through there for, and did a twenty yard stretch, I watched him, because we have a repeat work to do. We don't have any drains getting fed to taste, uh, you know, we haven't talked about this before, but I'm gonna talk to you some more, because obviously, there's something going on between whenever it's going on this parish and our blaster in Glove Creek, and I, I gotta live down this road. We have people that work here, who've been, they drive down this road, and it's a death trap right now, I, I wish that y'all would just drive down it just tomorrow, going, go drive down old Liberty. Everybody else is because of bridges now, but we're not giving any maintenance on it. So, I think you said that y'all, the trash trucks ready again? We have counters that have been there for, since before the election. Cleaned up a little bit, because everybody wants it pretty for election, but since the election, everything's just sitting there, garbage, give or receive, oh, no, no big deal. I know it's not state road, I saw the state, uh, DOC that may pick it up on the state road on sixty-three, but we gotta do the same thing on our parish. If y'all really care about it, then put something into it, don't just get this job that pays you sixty hundred dollars a month, thank you.
I have something. Um, I haven't spoken, Mr. Wilkinson, I am Alisha, but feel free anytime to call the police jury office.
People that work here, Mexican, call and ask, I've been doing this for.
No, I have not spoke with anyone, I mean, I don't know it.
I'll see them all, I mean, I'm close, close to one, but I'll be.
You can call, feel free to call with, with anything.
Have a representative, you represent them, I've never talked to him, you need to talk to him. I'd like to, I texted three weeks ago, he's cool, thank you. Elections have consequences.
As you know, John Ruchan, I work for the coroner's office, and I apologize for this kind of late report, because I was actually working on a coroner's case when y'all first meet in the year. We finished off last year in coroner's office with three hundred and seven cases. That's two hundred and eighty deaths in the parish, there were coroner cases, and another twenty-seven committals, for whatever reason. In addition to that, there was forty hospital cases that we handled too, besides cremation and that kinda thing, so three hundred and seven, really three hundred and forty-seven. Along with that, this is the first time in the coroner's office history that I know of, we retained over twenty thousand dollars from fees, reimbursed from other jurisdictions. Including state institutions, DOC, VA home, everywhere, then the towns and villages. So, that was a plus, went back into the budget, that go to the coroner, goes into the budget. And then that's just to give you an update, and right now, in this first month, we're over forty-five deaths in the parish. So, it's not a good time of year. But a sick vehicle, we probably work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruchan.
Uh, yes, I have the, uh, a comment. As I said, today I rode down, uh, Bottom Road, uh, to discuss about the potholes on Bottom Road, right at the end of the T's off at John Road, uh, and to try to address those potential, uh, potential holes there, but they are holes there. And still in this particular going on, Bottom Road, about a mile, about a mile from the end of Battle Road, which we call Mr. Buddy Davis' state for, state that, there are two washouts. I hope we can kinda get out and kinda get those filled in, there are two washouts there. And also on Payne Lane, on the side of Mr. Clarence, uh, Payne stays at, where the guys that put the coal within, right, where they call that, that needs to be, um, refilled, with the top dressing compound we use, because it have sunk, it's sunk in down in that particular area. And also on Deer Creek Lane, there's a coal that, that needs to be addressed in the same manner, whereas the, uh, the locks and all, that the field has kinda composed, uh, kinda a bit below the road. Um, also, back on Battle Road, there's a washout, uh, from the bridge that we would call, uh, from Callasport, I guess it's about a mile and a half, about a mile, well, not quarter mile, but maybe quarter mile from, at that, so William Stewart going back east. There's a washout down, we need to try to get that, uh, filled in, because it, a little morning might unlock the road, because it has washed out there a little bit. And also, I know when it's raining, or what have, you can't do any grading, we like to try to get some grading done on Houser Road, but I know when it's raining, I know it's, uh, possible that they, guys have to go out there, or it's not as, it's so rainy that y'all has been raining. So, that's kinda what, those are, uh, some of my public comments, just letting the people know, and to, that I've been kinda moving around and doing some certain things before they actually have to call me, thank you.
All of you, all of you should ride their district, ride the road. Ride.
And, and when you ride, there's a protocol, if you have to, and I look at you all, and you're too immune, but when you ride and you find these areas, people calling you, making, uh, turning, uh, complaints, you call in and put in a work order, okay? If there is a be, washout of something that's dangerous, uh, something that's imminent to public, uh, help, keep it put in a, uh, call, and we can call it extinguating circumstance, we come out and take care of it as soon as possible, but especially if there's something that's dangerous. But on these regular calls, you put in a work order, and then, uh, write it down, date it, and if you don't get any attention, uh, you know, within a week, a lot of times, you call in, give a call in, okay? And I, I'll help the best.
But yours clean, ride the district, you represent the state, ride the district.
Again, that's, so that's also enough, when it's raining, it getting raining like we getting now, you cannot grade mud. You have to wait until the road drops to a certain extent before you quit trading. And I know that we got a problem we got with, but if there's a washout, we wanna do that, we wanna take care of that as soon as possible.
I wanna say. Thank you, Mr. McCray, for that, I think that needed to be said, uh, some of our audience probably needs to hear that, maybe they will. Um, I wanna say that specifically the road in question, it's in a rotation, as was mentioned, by Mr. Hill, Mr. McCray. And, uh, it was reported by me on the twenty-ninth, that was the last Monday at six AM, and then it was reported again with a follow-up email, uh, this morning at seven AM. So, don't think that District Six is being ignored, the responses are in, as well as can be, and Mr. Hill and his staff are doing as much as they can, as fast as they can, so please be patient with us.
Oh, I just wanted to inquire, um, the information that is being logged, current requests that are being called in, is that public information? Is that a way for someone to be able to search, so that you can mitigate repeat callers or things like that? To say, damn, you are logged at some substitution, we're doing whatever we can.
Yeah, everything got to do.
Okay.
We have open door office, so.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
Door office.
Okay.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
Out of Borstie Lane, now, I'm not putting you on the spot.
No.
Just to make a point, did y'all have to get out there and grade it?
Not before the rain. I got it on, uh, I got it on work order board.
My call in, the point is, I know they're busy, and I know that there's a lot of spots like that. So, you know, I tend to jump up and down sometimes about stuff, and I know they got lots to catch up on.
I think we might have got the deep lines, the rain in January, or.
So, but my, let me give you a point, my point is like, this gentleman just left, talking about all the stuff on the side of the road, is the truck's been broken. I brought up, and we voted on it. See, you remember, six weeks ago?
I do.
About contracting out to get caught up. So we are, our whole worst enemy about not getting some things done, so we can continue making excuses, or we can make things happen. Mr. Armstead, I, I appreciate what you just said, because I like the point of being, I'm talking to the, my constituents, and that's, that's what you do. So that, that's all, I miss all good.
Another day, we have protocol, if someone put a cat out there, but they try, call out, make them record, make them put it down.
I don't know what they did, but I called.
They had to stick it, it's a proper call.
Yeah, there's some that put it out there, they don't make the call, they have, yeah, had to pick it up for three weeks, they call, why didn't they pick it up?
Some on my road, and you seen it.
Yeah.
Finally, the people just get up and truck it back on the property, so.
What you call it, a little bit of a.
But you can't pick it up if the truck is broken.
And let's encourage, um, your constituents to call DPW. If they can't get anyone in DPW, they can call me, and I will, you know, reach out to them. It's not, I mean, Facebook, we don't monitor Facebook, we still have, uh, um, protocol that we have to, so, with the young, with the gentleman that spoke before, he knew my name, but I never received a phone call from him. If so, I would have addressed it with, um, DPW, and I'm good about trying to let the jurors know what's going on in their district as well.
I get a lot of phone calls, I, I, when that can do, and what I do answer, because we have a, that can.
Yeah, I hate to change the subject here, but, uh, through the grapevine over the past month or so, I have heard that the College Temple suit has gone to court. As, is, is scheduled for court in May, talk to the, uh, clerk of court, David doesn't know anything, so can, is there any update on this? I mean, there's stuff like Chrissy wasn't allowed to go to the trial, but there was a trial, so, you know, I don't. We're seeing the grapevine, and we know about the grapevine, and when, so, you know, is it still just nothing's happening?
It's been eleven, we, you know, we had, we had no trial, no heavy.
Okay, so that, that's typical grapevine. Yeah.